I'll call this meeting of the City of International Falls to order. It's our regular city council meeting for Monday, October 4th, 2021. Uh, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, please note that all members of the city council are present. Uh, the first thing we're going to be doing is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. Uh, with that being said, there is an addition that was added, which is to, uh, in the consent agenda, approve Patrol Officer Dustin Helgeson's separation from employment effective October 1, 2021. And under new business approves the approved the police chief's recommendations to hire a part-time patrol officer, Ryan Stenson to, uh, a full-time patrol officer effective October 5th, 2021. The chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the additions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll go to the minutes. We have the minutes from our last, uh, regular city council meeting on, I'm sorry. Uh, the city council meeting of, uh, September 20th. Chair would entertain a motion for those minutes. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Beach. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to our special city council meeting, uh, which was, uh, for the levy. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes from September 27th.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to resolution approving the transfers, payments, and claims and accounts payable for the city. We have, uh, going to the 101 general fund, and that's coming from the 812 lodging tax fund. Uh, and then we go to accounts payable, City of International Falls, regular claims, airport commission claims of $21,502,000, or $502.59, airport capital project claims, $2,450, runway, uh, airport runway part three claims of $3,754,54, and airport runway phase three claims for the FAA for a total of accounts payable and claims of $5,737.85. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Can we, uh, just for the record, make it abundantly clear that the airport claims, we do get reimbursed for that, so we are not paying out $5 million. We will get a, uh, a large chunk of this back. It's just that we have to pay the bill when the bill comes in, and then we're reimbursed.
Essentially, it's 90% is what we'll be getting back. Please.
The, uh, airport claims, well, we get 95% financed or paid for through FAA. The other 5% is on a grant that we have got from them, so it'll actually cost nothing.
Even better than 90%. All right, any other, uh, thoughts on the payments and claims? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries five zero. Go to audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the council that's not already on the agenda. Uh, for those that are online, uh, you're also welcome to, uh, let the administrator know, uh, online that you want to speak and we have an opportunity at the end of this meeting. Um, we'll go to old business. Um, Allison Myers, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and happy Mental Health Awareness Week. So, happy coincidence. Um, but Northland Counseling Center requested an opportunity to correct some of the inaccuracies stated in the previous meeting regarding, um, the conditional use application. Uh, I understand my time is limited, so I'm only going to speak to a couple of items. First.
On the upside, your time isn't limited because.
Okay, well.
You're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda.
That's true, I suppose, so I could keep going, okay.
Oh, we didn't say that.
Oh, okay. So, not limitless.
Well, it's hungry.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'll just stick to what I wrote then.
Oh, yeah.
Um, first statements were made that questioned the investments of Northland in the community. Particularly noted was our nonprofit and tax-exempt status. Northland has been providing services in this community since 1959. We've grown, expanded our services and programming, and increased our, increased our staffing as an agency. Northland uses services and goods locally, uh, from grocery stores to repair shops. We employ 40 to 50 people at any given time. Uh, this does not include productive staff increases, uh, upon the completion of our new facility. Uh, we employ people who've grown up in the area and people who have chosen to relocate to this area to work at Northland. Our staff pay taxes, patronize local businesses, and their kids attend area schools. Northland has several, uh, several cooperative agreements with other agencies and organizations in the community. We participate in local charitable initiatives such as fundraising for the community cafe and one-day period. In 2020, Northland provided over $31,000 in uncompensated charity care. This does not include saved costs to the community, um, reducing ambulance trips, law enforcement calls, ER visits. Northland has been, is, and will continue to be invested in this community. Uh, the second matter, perhaps of greater importance, is in regards to statements made that imply that people with mental illness are dangerous or are sex offenders. This is not only inaccurate, but harmful to our community. 20% of the community has a mental health diagnosis. Some of you may be thinking that you don't know anyone with a mental illness. Unfortunately, many experience their symptoms alone and do not share their struggle due to the shame and stigma that such comments reinforce. It takes, on average, 11 years for a person to seek treatment upon onset of symptoms. So if it's not you, it's your daughter who hides in the bathroom at school because her anxiety is unrelenting. It's your partner who cries every morning in the shower because she doesn't know how she'll make it through another day. It's your son who doesn't understand why he can't connect to others like his peers. It's your coworker who was going to call the crisis response team for help, but decided they didn't want to bother anyone. It's your brother who spent last night with a bottle of whiskey and a loaded gun deciding whether to take his own life. It's your supervisor, your mom, your dad, it's already your neighbor. Mental illness does not discriminate, no matter your age, your gender, your race, your socioeconomic status, your education level, career, your intelligence, it doesn't matter. Depression is a leading cause of disability in the world. Depression and anxiety cost the global economy approximately $1 trillion each year in lost productivity. Suicide is a second leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 34. We are all affected by mental illness, even if we think we are not. A concern was raised that the city has no ordinance restricting where sex offenders can live. It may be important to address this, but no concern was raised until people with mental illness were considering moving into the neighborhood. This proposed ordinance is unrelated to Northland business, and to address it alongside a Northland agenda item is inappropriate. The safety of our citizens is incredibly important to us, particularly given that people with serious mental illness are 11 times more likely to be a victim of a violent crime than the general public. Most acts of violence are committed by people who are not mentally ill. Particularly when receiving treatment, people with serious mental illness are as or less likely to commit acts of violence than the general public. Do people with mental illness commit crime? Absolutely. But particularly when receiving treatment, they are no more likely than the general public. Uh, additionally, with treatment, uh, outcomes are vastly improved across the board for those, uh, as opposed to those who do not participate in treatment. This narrative is harmful and dangerous. It deters people from receiving the help they need, and there is a significant and immeasurable cost to that. In fact, it's one of the most frequently cited reasons that people do not seek treatment. This is such a problem, it has its own slogan, "Stop the Stigma." Our preference would be that there is no need for mental health treatment, uh, but data do not suggest that this will be the case. As a consolation, we'd like to see anyone needing mental health care be able to receive it free from judgment, shame, and stigma. So thank you for your time, and please reach out if you're looking for reputable resources on mental health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Allison?
I have a question on, uh, ordinance for sex offenders, um, being there's no policy for it. It concerns me, um, you know, in fact, I, I've seen where individuals moved around in our town over a period of time, um, different places and stuff, a sex offender, and it concerns me of where these people are going.
I would encourage you to take that up. Um, I'm just, my position is it's really unrelated to Northland business. So I certainly would suggest the board do what they feel they need to regarding that.
So that's what, I mean, for me, it concerns me enough that I, I just don't, until we get something in writing, a policy and stuff on how we're going to deal with these, I worry about them getting put in a place similar or a place like that, somewhere in town where there's other people having issues with their health and stuff. I, um, that's me.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why I voted no. And then the other thing was only three people had voted, or four people had voted out of eight or nine people on the planning commission. It wasn't a full, to me, it wasn't a full vote, but that bothered me too, but.
Any other questions? Right, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
So the next, next item would be to remove from the table, uh, the, um, recommendation from the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit for the licensed adult foster care. Um, Kelly, did you want to, uh, um, address the council on this before we, we open it up?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to confirm that, uh, the planning commission made a decision upon what was brought forward to them. They, uh, they brought the minutes, uh, they prepared additional minutes for you, for the council that, uh, they felt they'd already just, they'd already went through that situation and came up with their answers. Uh, the one thing I'd like to clarify with the council, if I could, is we typically have a seven-member board at the time that we had this commission meeting. Uh, very similar to a council meeting that would only have three members present. And, uh, I guess at this time, I'd just like to bring forth the recommendation from the planning commission to approve at this time. And, uh, if you should have any further questions, please just ask me.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, it would make sense to remove from the table, um, the planning commission's, uh, conditional use permit for licensed foster care. Chair would entertain a motion to remove from the table. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Beach, and an immediate second by Councilor Bowler.
Wait one second, that one.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
As an employee of Northland Counseling Center, I will be abstaining from this conversation.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion and a second to bring it to the table. This is not to approve or to deny the, um, the recommendation. It is just to, uh, bring it forward and off of the table. Chair would enter, or chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries for, for the motion and one abstention. So at this time, it is removed from the table. The chair would entertain a motion to approve, uh, recommendation from the planning commission, uh, for the conditional use permit for licensed adult foster care.
I approve, I make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. We have a second by Councilor Beach, and it's open for discussion. Any discussion? Please.
Uh, I'd just like to inform the council that, uh, Matt Gwynne, uh, the, uh, chairperson of the, uh, planning commission, uh, got ahold of me after the last meeting, uh, to, uh, inquire about what some of the issues were and what steps they should take to clarify, uh, the questions that the council had. Uh, and, uh, one of the issues that was talked about was, was there a quorum? Because only four people were there. Uh, but it was determined, uh, that, uh, uh, one of the people that had been appointed, uh, lived outside the city limits. Uh, and so instead of really having eight people on the planning commission, there were only seven. So with the four people present, I gave him my legal opinion that there was a quorum, and the action, they, they could take appropriate action and make recommendations with four people present. Um, and, uh, and I indicated to him that one of the big questions was, is that there was no detail as to what findings led to the recommendation that they had made. Uh, and, uh, we went through the four requirements, uh, and he indicated that all of those items had been discussed, and there was information, and they thought that they were answered favorably, which is why they recommended it. So I suggested to him that he revise those minutes and put more detail into what they listened to and what their decision was, and, and whether or not they felt those four requirements had firmly been met. Uh, and they've now done that, uh, and, uh, so from a legal standpoint, uh, I think the planning commission has acted appropriately. Uh, and I think the revised minutes that have those findings there, uh, substantiate what they determined.
Thank you.
The council's not required to adopt that recommendation, but that's what your commission has recommended.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, please.
From my understanding, there has not been any legal issues or police involvement in the present group, group home that they're in residential setting, um, than any other residential, uh, home. And I, I have drove by that building, driven by that building, and for an old building, I think it's in pretty fair shape. It doesn't look like it's still appetated, doesn't look like it, it has any major problems. It does have a gutter hanging down, but my house may have a gutter hanging down also. And, and it goes back to the original question I asked. If not in your neighborhood, whose neighborhood? I mean, they should have the freedom to live in any neighborhood that they wish.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So I would just say that, uh, the, the major concern that I had was having findings of fact, which have been, uh, have been, um, solidified in the, uh, resolution that we have with the updating of the minutes. Um, just to read the findings of fact that they had, uh, number one, the conditional use permit will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the environment or the proper, or the, or the other property in the immediate vicinity, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood. The, and you can see that as well, even with the properties that we have. The property values in International Falls actually are going up. We can see that in, uh, in what the assessments are on your house, or the value is on your houses. And, uh, I, I think any of our, um, our realtors are going to be able to point that out, that the price values of our homes are going up, whether it's being used as a, as a, um, conditional use permit for this use or any other, uh, uses. The proposed conditional use permit will not increase local or state expenditures in relation to costs of, uh, servicing or maintaining neighborhood properties. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses, uh, in the area, predominant uses of the area. I don't think that it's going to change that we have a park on the corner. I don't think it's going to change whether we, we do any, uh, infrastructure improvements there. It's just another residence where people would be living. And that, that the location and character of the proposed conditional use are considered to be consistent with the desirable pattern of development for the locality in general. It's a residential area. This is the one thing that, um, kind of struck me as odd since we left that meeting. I've had to do a lot of, uh, research, and I've talked to Kelly on a couple of occasions. Um, I learned a little bit more about our, our two and our one residential areas. Uh, I believe it's our one residential area is where this, uh, facility would have to go unless you get a conditional use. As I understand it, the reason that this house makes the most sense is it's one level and it has, uh, five bedrooms. Um, I live in residential, uh, or R1, which is basically the, the original International Falls from Third Street to 11th Street, from Third Avenue to, uh, 11th Avenue. Um, I don't know too many five-bedroom houses that are in that area that you're going to be able to have one level and make it use for this, uh, for this. So that's why we have conditional use permits, is to try to, um, get something that's going to be able to be used even though it's not really zoned for that. In a perfect world, we'd have more houses being built in that old area of town, and we wouldn't have this issue. We would have houses, uh, galore that we would be able to utilize. But to be honest, we don't, and it's something that we're, we're struggling with is homes and, uh, and residents, well, housing is, is a major issue we have. So when we have a house that meets the conditional use that, uh, you can't get anywhere else in town, it really seems like this is exactly why we have conditional use permits. So I'm, I'm satisfied that the findings of fact have, uh, been laid out. Um, I am satisfied with what, with what, uh, um, city attorney had pointed out that we have, uh, we had a quorum when they had made their, their decision. Um, so unless there's any other discussion, I think we can move forward with, uh, calling the question on this. Is there any other? Call the question.
Aye.
Nay.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries three for the motion, one against the motion, and one abstained. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, uh, is items that, uh, are routine business that do not, uh, have any discussion. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt, or to accept the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go, it's, Mayor, please.
Kind of order, don't we at least read it?
Well, we can.
I, I mean, it's, it's passed, but I just.
Well, it's two items. It was, uh, approve the 2022 group BCB Medicare Senior Gold Health Insurance Renewal and Authorized Signatures. And the second one was to approve, uh, Officer Helgeson's separation from employment uh, effective October 1, 2021.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can read it.
New business, uh, the mail proclamation declaring October 2021 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah. The motion by Councilor Holden, and the second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve, uh, police chief's recommendation to hire a part-time patrol officer, Ryan Stenson, to full-time patrol officer, uh, vacancy, uh, effective October 5th, 2021. Chair would entertain that motion. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Beach.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Chief, do you want to speak, or? Please.
Don't have much to add, I. Just obviously, since they're coming up so recently, I just wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to consider this, and it was short notice, um. Officer Helgeson was an excellent officer, and he's going to be missed by our department. Um, the resignation came, like I said, on very short notice. We're lucky enough to have a roster of eligible candidates, and Ryan Stenson stands above them all. In the short time he's been here, he has proven to be not only a proactive officer, but also kind of shares our vision for community policing, and like we were talking about earlier, just getting above the community and kids, and he's going to fill an important aspect in our department that we don't have right now. We're always looking to fill those different pieces beyond traditional police work, so I'm excited to have him, and you guys should be excited too.
Okay.
Chief, do you have more to you?
I do, and I, it's good.
Stand there.
Right.
What else can you do, a takedown?
Yeah, take down, chief.
Not me, no, come on.
I think he looks like a wrestler, maybe.
I think he is a wrestler. He's got a good eye.
Yeah. Built for it.
Yes. Well, we're excited to have you. How long have you been a part-time patrol officer with us?
Uh, my hire date was February 1st of this year, so.
That's a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah.
You gotta get him out of those khakis and into the blue, though.
It's coming, it's coming quickly.
This is just for today.
Okay.
Very, very excited, thank you guys.
Well, thank you. All right, uh, anybody else have any questions? All right, then I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Welcome. Welcome in the right order, welcome.
Congratulations, too.
All right, next, we have, uh, consider the recommendation to hire, uh, Shane Tramer, is that correct?
Tramer.
Tramer. Uh, you guys have to have complicated names. Uh, and Carter, how do you say your last name?
Bogger.
Bogger again? Okay. It has part-time patrol officers for the City of International Falls Police Department. Chair would entertain a motion, uh, for those two hires.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion by Councilor Kraus. We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? I, I would just say, if we could hire people with Johnson and maybe Thompson, that would be so much easier on me, but I, I, it is not my intent to, uh, ax up your name, having last name Drow, but it comes out as Dorba, Drowben. I mean, you can come up with anything, so I apologize, uh, but we're very excited to have you guys.
Yeah.
Please.
Oh, I was just going to say, uh, what was it, two meetings ago, we talked about, uh, uh, the roster being pretty much depleted for part-time officers, so it's, it's really nice to see that we're, we're replenishing that roster, because as the chief pointed out, for covering for vacation and special events and things, it's nice to have, so I can't say welcome yet, but I will, and give me a minute.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, chair would entertain, or would call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, guys.
Yeah.
Uh, next would be adopt the resolution, uh, for PERA Declaration for S. Tramer. Part-time patrol officer. Chair would entertain that motion. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Beach.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, five zero, motion passes five zero. Uh, next, we have the resolution for PERA Declaration for C. Loggigan. Part-time patrol officer. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to resolution approving delinquent water and sewer accounts to be verified, or be certified to the county auditor treasurer. Um, city administrator, you want to just give us a little background on how this has happened?
Yep.
It is bigger than normal?
Unfortunately, thank you, Mayor, yes, council. Um, due to COVID and, you know, the past year and a half we've had, unfortunately, we've gotten a, um, quantity of water and sewer services that have not been paid for, and this is the practice that we can do as a city. And this is the practice that we can do as a city government is certify these balances to the tax roll. And therefore, as you can see, the the list is um quite large, larger than normal, unfortunately, but you know, we will, they do have. Do they have a little more time, Emma? I'm going to turn it over to Emma too, because she works on this a little more closely, but we do, they have a certain time period in which they can pay it before we send it over to the county, so this may go down slightly, but depending upon what we see.
So uh before I we hand it to Emma, is uh the same information accurate for the next resolution as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
So essentially with the water and sewer, because we weren't able to shut up due to COVID precautions, we essentially uh did what a lot of other communities do, which is they will not shut water off. They will just terminate an account and basically draw a line in the sand and essentially say, this is what we're going to assess. So we took everything July twentieth, terminated anyone that had roughly five to six months delinquent or more. Um and then we basically said anything prior to that would be uh susceptible to uh assessment processes. So we sent out our letters to our normal processes. These are the people that have not paid after we've sent proper notification. Um they do have time to pay before the end of the year. However, after this point, they will incur the eight percent interest regardless. Um but Shelley will allow me to pull off um if someone comes to pay in the interim. Um but the county does have requirements that we have to have this to them by October fifteenth um in the format of a resolution. Um we have resumed our normal shut-off processes. So uh essentially, this will be our first month going back to normal shut-off processes, so anyone that has three months of billings outstanding would be um subject to shut off.
Uh okay, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh what if the owner and the customer are deceased?
So um it it really, I mean, those are the names on the tax records, so Shelley will process them accordingly as they would anyone alive or deceased. Um if it goes tax forfeit, that's a different conversation, which we've had in the past. Um where it's basically uncollectible, but we do our normal processes where we at least attempt to assess that and then hopefully, you know, whether someone comes forward, you know, an error, whatever the case might be.
Please.
And mayor, if I may, just also, we are enrolled in the program with the Minnesota Energy Assistance. So we are vendor with them. So if individuals enroll with Minnesota Energy Assistance, they will help with water bills as well. And so we didn't roll, um it's been a couple of months ago now, but as of October first, people who apply for the energy assistance also have, will be able to get help with their water water utility. So moving forward, hopefully that program will be helpful for citizens that are, you know, apply and qualify for the energy assistance as well.
Okay, thank you.
We've been putting that on our bills as well as encouraging anyone that's kind of come forward asking for payment arrangements or other things, making sure people know that there's think roughly fourteen million dollars that the state allocated specifically to water and sewer um to help recoup those costs. So people that are out there that don't know how to pay their bills, that's out there and that's an option.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I have a question and it is uh just a a thought and I've talked to um I've talked to Emma about this as well and um we haven't had the conversation at the council level. And it's probably not for today, but just a thought. Um many other cities don't shut off the water. Um they do this process as a annual situation. I mean, if if water gets behind, if it's three months, I believe we shut off our water right now. And then that's a call out for uh the public work staff. Then, you know, within what, twelve hours, someone's calling and paying thirty days so that they can get their water and we do this over and over again. And in the winter, it starts getting even worse because now we're we're moving snow to do all of this. So I think maybe the question that we should have is, in the future, is this something that we want to look at as continuing as a practice where we just keep the water on? However, we assess it, uh we assess it at the end of the year and that way we're saving monies from calling out our public works to be dealing with that. Just a just a question that we we could uh discuss maybe in uh committee of the whole or or somewhere else, but it's a it it's been talked about and more and more and more cities do that. Is that correct, Emma?
It is correct, and we've explored those options in the past, and I would love to have that discussion at a committee of the whole level. I think it would be m- more in line with the city's best interest financially to look at continuing shut-off practices, however, incurring um a higher reconnect and um shut-off fee. We currently don't have have implemented a shut-off fee. We only have implemented a twenty-five dollar reconnect fee, which is substantially lower than any other cities would have. Um most would have at minimum fifty dollars for both shut-off and reconnect. So I think that would be a a good thing to look at because we have lots of people that do not call us when they've moved out. So here we have these services that are continuing on and on for months and months and, like you said, people pass away, things happen where people don't contact us. And I just don't think it's in the city's best interest to have those services continue on, people potentially living in homes that aren't supposed to be living in homes squatting, things of that nature. Um so I think we're we're noticing a lot more of that due to COVID, so I think after having experienced what it's like to not have shut off, I don't think it's um the best option to to go with the the no shut off route.
Well, let's let's have a a discussion in the future, uh then specifically about what what does make the most sense for us in the in waters and we've had talks about fees and everything else, so we'll we'll have that conversation in the future, but not today. So we have a uh um the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the delinquent water and sewer accounts to be certified to the county.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. And I heard it. I heard it over here. You guys just did hear it. Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a similar one, which is the delinquent grass and blight uh invoices. Uh chair would entertain a motion to approve the grass and blight invoices to be certified to the county treasurer.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any uh any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh again, I would assume that for the individuals that are deceased on this list, that it's a matter of yeah, same.
Same thing. Yep, that's the
Wanted to clarify because there are, there's more than one.
Yep, there are. The the properties are still in their name on the tax roll, so we have to go through the processes.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, uh we'll go to the Human Resources Committee, uh recommendations, consider the removal of the E M T medical technician, uh emergency medical technician from the International Falls ambulance uh due to inactivity. Um if you look in your uh in your packet, we have it is uh Whitney Gearhart. The chair would entertain a motion to uh remove that individual. So move, we have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the mayor's appointments for uh the planning commission. Now, this is this is kind of one of the the things that had caused a little bit of the the issues with um the conditional use permit. We have, I've struggled for most of the year to get people to um apply for these positions and I um I had reached out uh at the beginning of the year and people that applied for all these other positions, but not the planning commission or this only board of appeals. So I um after what had happened last week, I wanted to see if we can't get some conversation going in our community about what specifically the planning and zoning commissions would be doing. The planning commission looks at our community as a whole and and it uh it works with city planning such as where we put things, your R two zoning, R two um residential, commercial, um looking at how we build out new plats in our community. It there's a whole, it's a substantial uh group, but they don't, they haven't had a lot to do in the last couple of years. However, when we did our planning, uh our, they were very integral in our uh in our comprehensive plan. They helped us out with that. They sat through a lot of meetings there. Um they have been uh active in in the this last conditional use permit, conditional use permits in the past. However, very active planning commissions deal with stuff like and this is what I put on social media. Um right now, if the state of Minnesota decides that we're going to get a uh marijuana dispensary, um International Falls gets a marijuana dispensary. And as of right now, because of our ordinances and what we have on our books, um it could go anywhere you want in the community. It could go on Main Street, it could go on Highway fifty-three. Um I think the only place it couldn't go is uh in a residential area. So one of the things that I put on social media is, in the event that we get a dispensary, do you think it should be on Main Street? A hundred and ninety-seven people reached out to me and said yes or no to that question. Um I had a handful of people that did understand what I put out and why I put it out. Um they asked if they could serve on a committee that would look at stuff like that. They also were interested in um the planning and zoning and looking at what we're doing over at Kerry Park. They were interested in uh the potential um work that goes into looking at if we're gonna possibly relocate locate the International Bridge. Lots of stuff that that is long-term visions for the community, including new residential areas, uh potential build-outs for a community. So with that being said, uh Mike Klopocky reached out to me. Leonard Peterson reached out to me, which currently are both on the zoning board of appeals. And uh Bill Valentine and Jessica Crosby all reached out to me because they wanted to serve on these boards. Um and they were not one of the hundred and ninety people that uh just said yes or no to whether we should have a dispensary on Main Street. Um they actually wrote a letter to me asking if they could be appointed to these boards. So it would be my intention today to uh reappoint Julie Erman and Paul Nevenin to the planning commission for their terms to end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. It would be my intention to appoint Michael Klopocky to a vacant uh position to end on December thirty-first of this year. And to remove Haley Silvers, who has moved out of our community and add Len Peterson to a a term that would end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh the chair would entertain a motion to approve the planning commission appointments.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. And next, I would uh make the um recommendation to appoint Bill Valentine and Jessica Crosby to the zoning board of appeals and remove Paul Nevenin from the zoning board of appeals as he uh I spoke with him about it and he's very okay with that. As he serves on many, many boards and commissions and he also understands the need to bring new people into uh these boards and commissions. So chair would entertain a motion to um appoint those two individuals.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before us?
Mr. Mayor, would it be the appropriate time to remind everybody that we're in October now? And January is coming. And that is when you reappoint, because there are terms that are expiring at the end of the year, so there are going to be positions that are going to be open, just to remind the public that if you want to get involved, you still have the opportunity to do so because there will be some appointments that'll be made in January when we reorganize the city council like we do every January. Uh so I just kind of want to make sure that it's out there, that people understand that as you can see, uh Mr. Klopocky's term does end on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. That's not to say that he wouldn't want to be reappointed, but there are going to be appointments that are going to be available for the citizens of the City of International Falls, and I encourage people that want to get involved to do so.
Absolutely. Yeah, um in fact, usually it it is in October, November where we start having those conversations about about that, but earlier the better and to be honest, we went almost an entire year with having a a short, two short boards because we can't find volunteers, which volunteers are, I I think all the nonprofits in the community could say it's getting harder and harder to find people to volunteer, so.
And this is the volunteer work that's that's really planning and and making a an immediate impact by kind of getting in the trenches and getting involved in city government.
Hmm, yep, absolutely. All right, any other new business? I uh I just have one thing and and this is on me more so than is anybody else. Um were we not going to have the snow removal policy at this meeting? I I forgot that when you showed me. I just, I when I, but we can do that at the next one for sure.
Yeah, I think we were going to.
I just, when he goes, would this be a great point? All of a sudden I thought that's what you were going to bring up.
I, you know, I I thought about that too, because I think it was my point that our average first snowfall is uh not next week, but the week after already over the course of the last five years, the average for snow is right around about the sixteenth of October, so.
But yeah, we'll we'll get that on the the next next agenda. I I totally missed that.
It's warm. I don't think it's going to happen this year. I'm hoping.
All right.
But.
All right, we'll go to the reports of boards, committees and department heads. City administrator?
I have nothing further to add, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. City attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in consult, uh lots of stuff going on. Uh we uh have uh initiated discussions with Kutaska uh on their desire to become owners of the building that currently has a hundred-year lease on it, uh so we've started those discussions. Uh and uh they're going to get back to us after their next meeting. And we've also had several meetings uh of our uh team that's going to be negotiating the upcoming union contracts. Uh and we actually uh have the first negotiated session this coming Wednesday with the Forty Niners. Uh so we're uh looking, getting an early start uh on that and hopefully we'll be able to uh get some good contracts uh with the various unions. That's all I have.
All right. Uh department head, the only one I know that we have on is Kelly Myers. Kelly, do you have anything to bring forward? I'm going to take that as a no. Uh reports to the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. I don't even have anything. All right, with nothing there, we'll go to audience. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? All right, hearing none, we'll uh um next regular city council meeting is on Monday, October eighteenth at five thirty. This meeting is adjourned.